I'll call the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation. Today with us is Pastor David Felton from the Fountains, a United Methodist Church.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Spirit of life, we gather this night mindful that we live in a world where hate and extremism breed turmoil and uncertainty. Strengthen us to be among those who overcome the temptation to live in fear, so that even in the midst of tragedy, we can be on about the work of peace. Even in this chamber, in our town, as we express differences of opinion and points of view, remind us of our common love for this community. And as our varied faith traditions all admonish us, help us to always remember the circumstances of the least among us, that we may be faithful stewards of the many gifts we have in this life. Especially as we approach next week's celebration of Thanksgiving, may we be empowered to be people of gratitude, humility, and service. May the Spirit of compassion and grace be with us here and now. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Legay?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember DePorter?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks Nancy. Okay, economic development. There's my report. We have some wonderful new partners in economic development and tourism, the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, our neighbors. As you know, from a previous meeting, the Salt River Tribe gave Fountain Hills Tourism $25,000. Grady and I represented the town at a luncheon given for all the 202 recipients. It was an honor for Fountain Hills to be introduced there as the tribe's newest recipient. As part of our partnership, our town tourism has added Salt River Recreation amenities to our official visitors guide for 2016. The guide is available right now, either in print or online. We had an executive meeting at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, discussion centered around legislation that will be proposing, that they will be proposing for the next session, especially the one pertaining to sober living group homes. We are also watching the construction sales tax issue, which if changed would be devastating to our town, I think everybody knows that. Senator Kavanaugh, Representative Eugen T. Rita have supported us in the past. Senator Kavanaugh is the lead who got us access to the governor's office that stopped this when it was originally proposed. And I've already spoken to Representative Jay Lawrence, and he'll also be adding his support for us this session. And that's all I have tonight for that. Now we will go on to the presentation by the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, board member Jerry Caldwell relating to the history of the organization and its future plans for the town. Grady, did you want to start?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Before you is a request to add East Loops Sonoran Trail to our McDowell Mountain Preserve Master Plan. We had a meeting recently with the residents of Eagles Nest who live up in this area at the request of the...
Skip over the presentation.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay.
We like the idea of a trail.
Back up here Jerry, you were...
You were right on, excuse me.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Good evening Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jerry Caldwell, and I am representing the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association. We also have several members of our board in the audience tonight, and we appreciate them being here. I would like to present a short dialogue on the purpose of FHCCA, showing our committees and the work we do for the town of Fountain Hills. We are the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, and we've been around quite some time, not quite this long, it's 1971, but 1978, we were organized and active in the community since then. Our purpose is develop, excuse me, is to develop, promote, and operate programs and activities that will enhance the cultural, civic, and educational and social qualities in Fountain Hills. We fulfill this purpose through the 11 working committees under the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association. The FHCCA is a nonprofit association, and that status assists our 11 committees greatly, as all contributions are tax deductible. To date, the Public Art Committee has raised over $2 million in public funds and grants to purchase and display public art throughout the community. At the time the community center was built, the Civic Association raised over one half, $500,000 for furnishings and artwork for the new community center. So far, over $300,000 in private funds and grants have been raised to beautify Fountain Park and the downtown area through our greening committee. While raising large sums of money has been a huge benefit to the community, the ongoing day-to-day focus of the FHCCA goes far beyond that of being just a successful fundraiser. I'd like to present the 11 committees of the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, and what they do to truly make a difference in Fountain Hills. Public art. The goal of the committee is to create the finest collection of public art in the southwestern United States. Community chorus. The committee entertains its audiences with beautiful choral music while providing an enjoyable music experience for its members. In-home concerts. The committee presents quality jazz and classical concerts during the winter in lovely homes in Fountain Hills. Community band. The band provides a local source of quality concert band music with its presentation, excuse me, and its participation in many community events and concerts. Greening of downtown. Through private donations and grants, the committee's ongoing efforts are to beautify Fountain Park and the downtown business area. Vision Fountain Hills. The committee seeks to provide venues to the community where residents can meet and discuss topics of interest to the future of Fountain Hills. Civic affairs. The FHCCA has been active in civic events such as candidate forums, mentor programs, and assisting in registering 18-year-olds to vote. You may recognize two or three in that slide. Jury dark show. The committee provides an annual venue for local artists to show their efforts to the community and participate in the annual judging. Kindness committee. Through its website, the committee reports on random acts of kindness performed by citizens in Fountain Hills. The poinsettia tree. During every Christmas holiday season, 220 poinsettia plants make up our tree, which is displayed at Avenue of the Fountains, at the Avenue of Fountains. Plants donated by individuals are in memory of a loved one. Defibrillator project. Over 40 defibrillators have been placed in Fountain Hills to date through the private donations of citizens and groups. We do make a difference. Here's the list again of our committees. We ask for members and future members of our association to grow our membership, keep the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association strong, and enable us to provide quality-of-life programs to Fountain Hills. Would like to invite others in the audience and the council and mayor to, if you're not a member, to climb aboard and become a member of our ever-growing organization, to help it rise to new heights for the good of Fountain Hills. That's our logo. Please visit our website for more information on our organization, FHCCA. We have some brochures in the back for any of the audience that would like to pick one up in the council, and I appreciate your time.
All right.
Any questions that I may answer?
That was a great presentation, thanks. Questions or comments from council? Councilman Yates?
Jerry, good to see you again, thank you.
Good to see you, Council.
Could you walk through the different ways that you obtain art? I know we're big on economic development and working with developers, and could you kind of share with everybody? Because sometimes people think that we're using taxpayer money to buy art, and of course that's not the case, but if you could kind of go over the different ways that we get all the art that you guys collect and how it's placed?
Great question. And Councilman Brown will remember this, when we started in the council, the...
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning commission, and Cecily and Mr. Yates, we inaugurated that program, which was great. But I am talking over my head, it's beyond my pay grade. So I'm going to ask the prior mayor, Jerry Miles, to come up because he is head of that committee.
Over the last 15 years, we have acquired 150 pieces of public art around this town, all but three paid for by private funds, donated. We have an active committee. We look for pieces of art. We find a piece, we try to find a donor. We get calls from people who would like to buy a piece in honor of somebody. We contain and maintain a wish book that we take out to show them. One of the most delightful ones we had, a gentleman called, said he wanted to buy something in honor of his father-in-law who died. Sandy Thompson, who's chair of our committee, and I went out to see him, sat down, went through the book. There was a picture of a statue of Arnold Reagan. He says, "I like that, I'll buy it." Really that quickly.
Nice.
And right now, we have one piece that's been offered to us, we may or may not accept it. A lot of the pieces you saw out in the lobby have been given to us. Most of the pieces, with only two or three exceptions that you see out in the centennial circle, are ones where we have identified them and we have looked for them. In every case, you will find the name of a donor, and the year it was acquired. We have two or three pieces in the pipeline now. We're always looking for more donations. As I said, we've given over $2 million in private funds to buy these pieces.
Any other questions? Questions for Mayor Miles? No? Okay. And we all know that Jackie and Jerry Miles started the whole art committee, the whole idea of art in this town, and were the first donors. And what I was thinking when I was seeing your presentation, as I was just kind of putting faces to each one of those things, when I saw the poinsettia tree and the defibrillator, I thought of Phil.
Phil.
Yeah, no, so, you know, and then you look at the greening, and you think, and you think of the greening committee that's sitting right there.
Jerry Butler.
Jerry, and, yeah. I mean, it's like somebody picked up on this, spearheaded it, and made it work, and then it became a part of the FHCCA. So, we've got some great people working here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're very proud of it. And if you have no other questions, thank you for tonight, and for...
I think Councilwoman Magazine has either a question or a comment.
Not a question, just a comment. Jerry, I want to thank you and the FHCCA. I think you're a phenomenal organization. If you didn't exist, we'd have to invent you. And I've really been particularly pleased that you serve as an umbrella, so that as new projects, new ideas come to the fore, you're very willing to put them under your umbrella, and work with them, and nurture them, and make them work. I think it's just been an incredible asset to the community.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that.
And Councilman Porter?
I just totally want to echo that, that the umbrella is a perfect way to show that on that PowerPoint, everything that is underneath that. It served as an excellent, and still, as I'm still learning, training ground for me. When Mayor Miles asked me to join FHCCA board a couple of years ago, it was, it was so fantastic to learn about the huge impact that the group makes. And every time I hear there's something FHCCA is involved with, I know it's going to be solid. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. Thank you for having us. And I'm very thankful to live in the greatest town in America.
Absolutely. You know it. Uh-huh. And now we have calls to the public. Do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, I have a speaker card from Norman Thorpe, but it doesn't specify which item.
And Norman's here?
I'm sorry, that's the next item.
So it's on the, one of the agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any speaker cards on non-agenda items? No, okay. Then we'll go on to our consent agenda. We have two. Can I get a motion to approve the two of them as written?
Some more.
Mayor's second.
Okay. And a roll call vote on that, Nancy, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll go on to the regular agenda items, number three, consideration of revising the McDowell Mountain Preserve Master Plan to add the East Loop Sonoran Trail. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll try this again.
Take two.
My crib sheet was already turned to this page, and I do apologize. This item before the council has to do with the East Loop Sonoran Trail being added to the McDowell Mountain Preserve Master Plan. This item was originally scheduled to be before the council back, I believe in August, and due to some concerns that the Eagles Nest Homeowner Association raised with questions that they had regarding this particular loop on the trail, they wanted to see if we can wait until residents came back, because a number of people who live in Eagles Nest are seasonal residents. And so they wanted to make sure that they had adequate time to actually provide some input and feedback. So we had a meeting on October 29th at the community center, and we had probably, I'm thinking just as an estimate, about 20, 20 people, I think, 25 people who were there. We also had on the part of staff, we had Dave Laterno, the commander of the MCSO here, as well as Mark Fisher, a deputy, and also staff, Paul Mood, our Development Services Director, Mark Mayer, the Community Services Director, and also Mr. Bill Craig and Mr. Bill Myers, who represent the McDowell Mountain Commission. So anyways, the meeting went very well in terms of input, and a lot of the input we had was really more concerns about trespassing. But the residents also expressed concerns about the buffer and so forth. So we basically, to make a long story short, we listened to them. I also made a personal commitment, professional commitment, to the residents of Eagles Nest, that the town would be working very closely with the HOA there to try to help resolve the issue that they're experiencing with motorized vehicles that are unauthorized in that area, as well as trespassers. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our Community Services Director, Mr. Mayer, who has some other comments before we give a presentation on this.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. As the town manager, Mr. Grady Miller indicated, we did have a meeting with the neighborhood, and I certainly echo the town manager's comments. I think it was productive in a sense, we got to hear from those that were present. And from that meeting, we developed, as I included in my agenda staff memo, the following, that the trail would be moved an additional 100 feet from what was originally proposed, from the back of property lines from 200 to 300 feet, and that we provide a barrier for the current Jeep access points being used by vehicles to access the, to trespass. And we would install signage in those areas notifying people that they were in fact indeed trespassing. We would place signs at key points along the trail near Eagles Nest that trespassing is illegal and punishable by law enforcement. And then lastly, build the proposed trail to a width of only two feet to discourage use by ORVs. One of the things that was proposed in the trail was that, as it originally exists now, and has been proposed, there would be a series of loops, and this would allow folks, instead of having to literally go through either partial access through the preserve and then turn around and heading back to their point of origin, or literally going from one end of the preserve through the McDowell Mountain Regional Park and out into Eagles Nest again, which was a lengthy distance. Hikers, it's clear, enjoy loops because it gives them a great deal of variety, certain levels of difficulty, and they can choose that option, obviously a choice of views. And so it's a, it's a much better trail system, and people like, that use trails, like to have some loops involved. So this is what this was designed to do. And finally, I would want to reiterate that one of the things and tasks that the commission was given when they were first formed, was to develop a trail system within the preserve. And so that's what brings us here this evening, is to expand what is currently available to the hikers. With that, I will turn the meeting over to Bill Craig and Bill Myers for some comments.
Okay, that's fine.
Hey, Bill. Good evening. I am an appointed member of the commission for the McDowell Mountain Preserve, appointed by you all. I'm also on the board of the Sonoran Conservancy of Fountain Hills, and as such, I am here to request that you revise the master plan for our preserve to include the East Loop Sonoran Trail. I will go through some of my points briefly, since Mr. Mayer has nicely already provided you with some of the salient points regarding the placement of the trail, and reference to our consideration for an interaction with our neighbors in Eagles Nest. For your reference, this is a map of the preserve for orientation. This is where the future trailhead will be. On down here, this is part of the preserve also. On down here is where Copper Wind is, and this is the Golden Eagle Trailhead. With the future trailhead being here, they will be able to, people will have access to all of the trails. Just in reference, this is the promenade trail right along here, and this goes over to McDowell Mountain Park, which is the Sonoran Trail. Now, to show you, this is the proposed trail that was approved by both Fountain Hills Conservancy and the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission. Notice 300-foot buffer. Again, this is the end of the promenade trail, and this is the Sonoran Trail, which was shown on the last slide. This is the proposed trail, if my fingers, hands would be a little more steady. And with this proposed trail, there is this 300-foot buffer, which we changed from 200 after meeting with the residents. And this is an optional loop, well, we will be building it if we get the proposal accepted. This is an optional loop here, coming down the new trail, up this part of a trail, and back, and that first loop would be approximately a three-mile loop from the proposed trailhead. The second loop would be coming down to this point, just near the water tower, and back would be about four and a half miles, and then going all the way to the end, which meets with McDowell Mountain Park, and back would be a six-mile trail. Since these approvals, I have met with Mr. Jeremy Hall, president of MCO, making him aware of the trail proposal and its proximity to Eagles Nest. At his request, we subsequently met with the residents. As you already have, the following attempts were made, and Mr. Mayer has mentioned those, so I won't go through those five points again. These considerations have been put together with the help of Mr. Grady Miller and Mr. Mark Mayer, and this information has been sent to Eagles Nest residents. We strongly believe that when the trailhead is completed in 2017, that this stacked loop trail, these previously mentioned considerations, all three of these things will virtually eliminate cutting through from the trail system to private land. I do trail building for pine, strawberry portion of the Tonto National Forest. I have coordinated with Scott Hamilton, the head trail builder of Scottsdale, in helping to design, and have guided our volunteer trailblazers in construction of the Andrews Kinsey Trail, the trail that connects Fountain Hills with Scottsdale. I have attended classes and conferences on trail building. I am on the board of the McDowell Park Association, and as such, have frequent contact with Supervisor Rand Hubbell. With this background, I am aware that loop and stacked trails are the most sought-after type of trails. Just to add to this quickly, in addition to Mr. Rand Hubbell, Mr. Scott Hamilton from Scottsdale sent me an email, and I'll just mention a couple of things. Our experience here in Scottsdale is that trail users prefer loop trails. We have used the stacked loop concept in Scottsdale Preserve with much success. And he adds in another paragraph that when they were building the Pinnacle Peak Park and trails associated with that, adjacent neighbors expressed a diverse array of concerns. Scottsdale worked closely with the neighborhoods, as Mr. Grady Miller and Mr. Mark Mayer are presently doing with Eagles Nest. When they did a follow-through six months after the park was built, Mr. Hamilton quotes, "There were no material issues to speak about," and the park has been functioning now for 13 years. Finally, let me mention that one of the stated charges, as Mr. Mayer mentioned, in the formation of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, was to build trails in the preserve. As such, we, and I include in "we" a number of users of the trail, and helpers in maintaining the trails, and if I could ask them to quickly stand?
Wow.
And now? Uh-huh. And now we have calls to the public. Do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, I have a speaker card from Norman Thorpe, but it doesn't specify which item.
We are requesting that you approve this proposal for the East Loop Sonoran Trail. And now I'd like to turn it over to the chairman of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, Mr. Bill Mayer.
The tag team of the Bills.
There we go, the Bill and Bill Show.
I knew they were all part of your hikers, because they all look so healthy.
I didn't know Bill actually owned a jacket until tonight. And I have some, being an old CPA, but they're still collecting dust in the closet. My name is Bill Myers. I'm, I live here in the most beautiful city in the state, perhaps the, perhaps the nation. I only live about a half mile from where I'm standing right now. As Bill mentioned, I'm the chair of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, and I just have a few comments that I wanted to reiterate, and thank you very much for Mr. Miller and Mark Mayer giving a good presentation on these, on this East Loop Sonoran Trail. I'm sure I'll goof that up somewhere down the line. But before I give my brief comments, I wanted to ask Mr. Rand Hubbell to come up. Rand Hubbell, in case you don't know, is the supervisor of the regional park north of us. It's 21,000 acres. Our town is about 13,000 acres. He's got about 50 miles of trails, and I asked him to come and give a few comments on loop trails and what his estimation is of our East Loop Sonoran Trail. So Rand, could you come up and give a couple of comments, please?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So many of you I've known for years and years, and it's great to see you all again. I'm sorry we don't cross paths more often. The amendment to the trail plan was shown to me several months ago, and when I, I saw it, I immediately wanted to endorse it. It does create, as you've heard this evening, stacked loops, and I have spent 13 years in McDowell Mountain Regional Park trying to create stacked loops on the trail system that I inherited. And so this is just a great thing for hikers, to have different lengths of trails. The idea that you don't have to go out and double back, out and back trails, you can be excited by what's around the next corner. So it is what I think all land managers are trying to create, and so the addition of this amendment to the preserve is, I want to speak strongly in support of it. I also had a conversation with Scott Hamilton, the trail coordinator at Scottsdale, and he echoed many of the things that he put in the email to Bill, and that there was great concern from the Estancia development prior to the development of Pinnacle Peak Trail and Pinnacle Peak Park. And again, he said that they built it with the understanding that they would review it in six months, willing to reroute the trail if there were concerns. They gave them a phone number to call 24 hours a day. It was monitored if they had criminal concerns, trespassing, vandalism. They also put cameras up to record anybody who left the trail and tried to go into that nearby subdivision. Not only did they not have any pictures at the end of the six months, they didn't have any calls at all from that subdivision expressing concerns or complaints. And so Scott's recollection, recollection was that at the six-month meeting, no homeowners at all came to that meeting to express any concerns. So I think this is a great addition, and I speak strongly in support of it. Thank you for your time.
Is this strictly hiking? Is this only hiking?
Hiking, running. It's only two feet wide, no motorized vehicles at all.
No motorized vehicles?
No horses.
No horses?
Yeah. People, that's what it is.
Just people, okay.
I really want to take a quick note to thank a number of people who are involved in this thing, Mr. Grady, Mark, not only MMPC, but the Conservancy. A number of town people were involved in this, especially a guy named Ken Valverde, who you all know, I'm sure. He was able to produce a lot of maps like this, and he gave us a great amount of help. So I want to say thank you to him. My estimation is that the East Loop Sonoran Trail will be increasing value for the, for the preserve, and anything that increases the value of the preserve increases the value of our town. And I think this is one of those things that's a double good deal. I think with, if you folks pass this tonight, or hopefully tonight, that the East Loop Sonoran Trail will actually, as people have indicated, decrease the amount of trespassing that might be occurring now. People don't like to go in one way and come back the same way. Now we'll have three options or more from the existing Golden Eagle Trailhead, and hopefully from the to-be-built Adaro Canyon Trailhead. So it's a win-win situation all the way around. Just a couple of reiterations. We started with 100-foot, we went to 200 feet, we're at 300 feet. In addition to that 300 feet, there's a setback, as you know, I think it's 40 feet. So there's a long ways, and as you can see from the map, most of the property is more than 300 feet, four, five, seven, 800 feet back. So it's really a long ways back. Again, no horses. It's open only from sunrise to dusk, hikers only, and I'm just thrilled to death that, that we've gotten this far. One other comment before I leave here is, I think a lot of credit goes to Bill Craig, who was the driving force to get this as far as it's gotten. He and I were up there a number of times, but he was up there more than I was, the organized meeting, so give him a lot of credit. Appreciate that. So with that, I would encourage the council to approve this and get on with the blood, sweat, and tears of building the trail. And I say that tongue-in-cheek in a way, but if you've ever backed into a choya, you know there's blood, sweat, and tears. There is some blood, there will be some tears with that. But a great big thank you to the Conservancy folks, many of which are right behind me, because they're the folks that actually make the trail happen. An example is the recently completed Andrews Kinsey Trail. Part of it's in Fountain Hills, part of it's in Scottsdale. Total cost of town to build that thing was zero. Scottsdale paid $95,000 for their comparable one trail. So Conservancy, I keep giving those guys accolades, and we should all be doing that. Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes?
Questions? Vice Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So Bill, how long will it take to construct the trail?
That's a good question for, for the other Bill, and I think that he is saying he can finish it with all the help of these folks, 2017. I'd like to see it built sooner, so we'll be talking a little bit about that.
And what's the anticipated start date if it's approved?
December.
2015, December.
It depends on access up there.
Bill, could you come on up? Come on up, just so we can get it in the mic for everybody.
We're hoping that if we get the approval, we can have it done in conjunction with, or very near the conjunction with, the completion of the trailhead in 2017.
Thank you.
There'll be some coordination with, with MCO also to be able to get us up there without falling in a big hole.
Councilman Yates.
Thanks, Mayor. Bill, guys, tremendous job. I, I couldn't say enough. I'm in shape, but I'm in a round shape. So my question, my wife's a marathon runner, she's going to love this, but for those of us who are beginners again, how would you rate this trail? Beginner, intermediate, expert?
I think it's rated intermediate, Bill.
Yes, the light side of intermediate.
Was that a dig?
As opposed to the Sonoran Trail, my objective is to keep it on with less elevation change than the Sonoran Trail, if any of you have ever been on it.
And so many options, it's tremendous. Thank you, Mayor. Thank, great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We got some speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, the first one is Mr. Norman Thorpe.
Good evening, thank you very much. Most of the comments, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Norman Thorpe, and my wife and I are property owners and seasonal residents in Fountain Hills, and I'm speaking in favor of development of the proposed new east loop of the Sonoran Trail. Most of the comments that I wanted to share have already been addressed, and I, so I'll skip over those, but I just want to add that trails are an important asset for Fountain Hills, just like the fountain and fountain park and the golf courses and other amenities that we have. They attract visitors here and generate business for Fountain Hills restaurants, supermarkets, bike shops, and other businesses. As a recreation option, trails make Fountain Hills a more desirable place to live and enhance property values. Some years ago, my wife and I came to Fountain Hills for the first time to hike at McDowell Mountain Regional Park. And we, we, this was our first visit, and we liked it, we came back, and eventually we bought property here. This was all because of trails. Other people come here for trails also. You see this especially on weekends, when cars with bikes on top or hikers inside fill parking spaces outside of Fountain Hills restaurants. And that will be even more true when the new Adaro Canyon Trailhead opens in probably But as, as stated, the trails we have in the preserve now won't necessarily bring out-of-towners back for repeat visits, because trails that are out and back are boring. And so this would address that and increase our chances to bring outside, bring out-of-town recreationists to Fountain Hills to enjoy our trails. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Norman. Next.
Mr. Eugene, I apologize, Mikulakchik?
Close enough.
Sorry.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Eugene Mikulakchik. I'm a member or resident of Fountain Hills. I also have the honor of being, serving on the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, but more importantly, I've been pressed into service by Bill Craig a number of times to help with the trailblazer program, and that too is a great pleasure and an honor, if not a backbreaking agony on occasion. I would urge the commission or the town council to approve the proposed trail loop. I noticed that the concerns of the Eagle Mountain, Eagles Nest people should be resolved with respect to the 300-foot buffer minimum, and I was a little surprised, and I didn't realize until tonight, that the trail is going to be limited to a width of two feet. As one of the people who may be out there swinging a pick and a shovel helping build that, I thank you very much for that. I would urge the council to approve it, and I thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Next.
Mr. Rand Hubbell?
Okay, that's it? All right. Council discussion? Any council discussion? Councilman Legay?
Sure, Mayor. I, I don't really have a lot of comments, so I'll just put out a motion there, and then obviously we can discuss if we want to go further with it. I move to approve the revise, to revise the McDowell Mountain Preserve master plan and create the East Loop Sonoran Trail on the recommendation of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, including the five conditions that are outlined in our staff report.
All right, thank you. A motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Now, I'll just add that I've also gotten some letters, and this one's from, actually from a neighbor who lives there, in favor of the trail, and they specifically tell me that they live right near it. So I've gotten lots of phone calls from even the neighbors saying that they're in favor of this. Anything else? Councilwoman Hanson?
Just a quick question, I guess, for Mark.
For Mark?
Mark, in one of the, the five stipulations, it talks about the placement of the signs along the trail. On the map, it shows the trail in, in some places that comes fairly close to the buffer. Are those kind of the areas where there might be some signage? And I'm sure some of the topography would, you know, preclude cut-through traffic as well, but I just wondered the ones, where the trail comes the closest to the buffer?
I think part of the concern was, when you got to some of those places where the trail would turn and edges towards and gets close to the buffer, that that was, would be the appropriate places to put some signs, yes.
Okay. And then I know the letter that you included in the packet that did go out to all the property owners, was, did you have any feedback from?
None.
Any of those? Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion? If not, I have a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Bills. Thank you, Rand, and everyone else who came. Thank you. Okay, we'll just give you a second to, to go out quietly. Oh, there weren't a lot of people, huh? They need a lot of people to build a trail.
I thought they were, I couldn't remember if they were the Eagles Nest residents or not, I was getting a little worried.
All right, we're going to go on to number four, consideration of a final replat at 16750, 16800, and 16820, East Paul Norton Parkway, and at 16845 East Avenue of the Fountains, Platte 208, Block 7, Lots 123, Case Number S2015-08. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this item before you is a request for approval of the final replat for what are commonly known as Lots 1, 2, and 3 on Platte 208, Block 7. This is what we know as the Morning Star Project, which is under construction to the east of the town hall complex here. The applicant has requested this as a result of the need to basically join these lots together, because the project, the construction of the building, actually in some cases is overlapping onto multiple lots. This item needs to be approved prior to the council, needs to be approved by the council prior to the town being able to issue a building permit. Currently, right now, the, the developer of the Morning Star Project has a at-risk grading permit, which has very limited types of construction activities that are allowed. So this project, in order to move forward and go vertical and do much more extensive construction, does need to require, or is required to have this final replat approved. In addition to this, the, the developer has also obtained from an adjacent property an easement agreement, because this, this project also has some other uses that will be on the next property, roughly a 40-by-1,000-foot section. So with that, staff recommends approval of this, and I do see that Mr. Wade Felkins, the chief architect and project manager of this project, is here. If there's any questions that you have of him, or of me, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Grady. Open it up to any council discussion? Any? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Yates?
Mayor, I move to approve the final replat of 16750, 16800, and 16820, East Paul Norton Parkway, and 16845 East Avenue of the Fountains, Platte 208, Block 7, Lots 1, 2, and 3, as presented.
Any speaker cards? I don't think there's anybody left. Any, any other council discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's it. All right, one staff report for the two items, number five and six. We will need two separate motions. Consideration of Resolution 2015-56, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the town clerk and entitled the 2012-2014 Amendments to the Tax Code of the Town Fountain Hills. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, before you, as you can see in your packets, quite a large package of, of requests to approve the 2012, 2014 Amendments to the Tax Code of the Town Fountain Hills. Our finance director, Craig Rudolphy, will just give a, a brief synopsis of what you have before you. And with that, I'll go ahead and have Craig come up to the podium.
Mayor Kavanaugh, and members of council. The town has last updated its tax code in 2011. Since that time, there's been several meetings of the Municipal Tax Code Commission that has adopted many amendments and approved them, and they've all been incorporated into the Model City Tax Code. the model city tax code. So it's time for the town to update our current tax policy, last updated in 2011, to incorporate all of those new amendments. In your packet, you had the amendments that were only 45 pages long, and there also was included a three-page summary. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I am not a tax attorney. So with that said, I'm finished.
Any questions or comments?
Mayor, I did have a comment, please, thank you. Craig, thank you so much for that summary. I really appreciate that, thank you. Not that I understand all of it, but I'm a little closer to understanding most of it.
Better than before, yeah.
But it was better than reading a 26-page document. Nice job on the summary, thank you.
Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then, if that's it, then we'd like to make a motion. Councilman DePorter, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to move to approve Resolution 2015-56 and adopt Ordinance 15-11.
Second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we go on to number six. Consideration of Ordinance 15-11 related to the transaction privilege tax, adopting the 2012-2014 Amendments to the Tax Code of the Town of Fountain Hills by reference, establishing effective dates, providing for severability, severability, and providing penalties for violations. Grady?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember DePorter's motion actually included both, included the resolution and the ordinance.
Okay, well, I've got a note here saying that we needed two separate motions, and that was Bev's note.
That was Bev's edict, but because of the motion, actually, I already covered it. I think you're good.
Okay, so assuming we didn't have any speaker cards on that second one.
Nick's an overachiever.
Then I...
Very slick, Nick.
Nick, you're going to have to take that up with Bev.
It was, it was in, it was in the status board.
Ah, okay. All right, then we're up to number seven. Any direction for the town manager? Anything we haven't already discussed? Okay, then, we'll go on to number eight, which is a summary of activities or requests. I've got a couple of things, and I'm going to start off with Councilman DePorter.
Yes, this evening, I was fortunate to attend Chicanos Polycausus Carl Hayden Youth Center, where Senator Kavanaugh, Representative Lawrence were also there to represent Fountain Hills very well. Carl Hayden Youth Center serves youth in the South Phoenix area for after-school activities, gets them involved more in academics, athletics, technology, STEM programs, and it was great to have that support from Fountain Hills. And I think Mayor Kavanaugh sent him because she could not make it, but it was fantastic to have them both. Also, the, I participated in the Job Shadow Program with Arizona State University students, and the two young gentlemen who almost made it the whole meeting that were sitting in the front row were both senior political science students that were tasked with coming to a council meeting, and so they drove over here from the West Campus over in Glendale, so it was nice to have them as well. And I'd like to thank the town and the mayor and Grady for participating in the Job Shadow Program as well. The students are very, very happy about that.
Okay, and either you or Councilman Magazine want to report on the Public Policy Committee for the chamber? Anything you want to say about that?
I'm unprepared, maybe Nick is...
You're unprepared. Nick is good off the cuff.
It was Councilman Magazine, Mayor Kavanaugh, and I attended the Public Policy Meeting. It was more, it was directly, we talked a lot about the fair and the attendance of the fair and issues, new issues that will arise with new developments on the avenue and parking. I'm trying to think, what else was the main topic of that meeting?
Well, I think it was just, generally, we discussed, Scott gave us his ideas on improvement for the fair for next time, and also Superintendent Sweeney was there and...
Superintendent Sweeney from the Fountain Hill School District was there, taking questions and talking, giving updates on what the school district's doing to really change with how they're operating in order to increase their enrollments and offer a key differentiator to get families to move into our community. So it was good to hear, good to hear from him as well.
Mayor, could I make a quick comment on that one?
Yes.
I found it startling. I get lots of people who come to me and say, and I think we all do, that people are bringing their children to other areas to go to school. And he shared with us some statistics, which I found very heartening, which is that the numbers of children who are leaving Fountain Hills to go to schools is just very, very small. It's in single digits. And then when you include people who are moving in here and bringing their children to our schools, it's even smaller. So somehow, and he said this, and I think we all agree, we've got to get the word out, because the rumor throughout town, at least based upon people who talk to me, is that, you know, huge numbers of parents are bringing their kids to Scottsdale and other communities to go to school, and it just is not accurate.
Sure. Sure.
Another comment about that, another number, stat that came from that was something that Dr. Sweeney's looking at. We have about 165, 170 graduating seniors this year, and they look at the pipeline, right, where we're starting, and we have 75 kindergarteners starting. So it shows where we're going and the trajectory, should they not make those adjustments, so.
Okay, then I've got a couple of things related. Did you have something?
I just wanted to thank Nancy Walter for sitting in for Bender as our clerk tonight. She did a wonderful job.
Yeah.
And we wanted to formally embarrass her.
He told me he was going to do that.
Thank you.
I told him not to do it. He did it anyway. All right. I want to tell you about a visit that John and I made to a great organization called Gabriel's Angels. It's an incredible organization, and to quote from their mission statement, "Our mission is to deliver healing pet therapy to at-risk children, nurturing their emotional development and enhancing the quality of their lives forever." And my plan is, I'd like to introduce the organization to Fountain Hills dog owners, since volunteers for this program are always needed. I've already contacted the New WAG magazine and our own A-Dog, so if you'd like to learn more about Gabriel's Angels, take a look at their Facebook page or online at gabriel'sangels.org. John and I stopped to greet the players and the sponsors of the Copperwind Women's Pro Challenge Tennis Tournament. Players from as far away as Serbia got a beautiful look at Fountain Hills. We had our town logo on a banner on each of the tennis courts that was streamed all over the world. I want to thank Rachel and her team for the outstanding job they did to help the town be a part of this event. My mayor's youth council had their retreat this weekend at the community center. There were 14 students who participated in many activities that were led by Heather Ware. We had a great time. Sleeping on the floor is a little difficult for Heather and me, but it's worth it to get up in the morning and have breakfast with the students at our wrap-up meeting. The retreat brings all of our students closer together in friendship and helps us plan for upcoming year. Our next event, we'll be helping out at the Turkey Trot. The Chamber Fair was this past weekend. I want to thank our tourism team and our volunteers for having a town table all weekend. With over 100,000 visitors, what better way to reach out with information about our town? And they were still there, manning the table through the Sunday afternoon rain. Brave souls. That's it. That's all I've got. Anybody have anything else? And Grady, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I just wanted to share with you a bit of good news. It's not every council meeting that ever have a report, and usually, when I do speak, it's usually not always about good things, but this is a very feel-good moment, and that is, you'll recall back in June, the council approved the staff submitting a grant to the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. We did just recently learn that we were approved for $211,000 to help us with refurbishing tennis courts, and our portion of that is $105,000. Now, the other good news about it is that $105,000 is going to be coming from savings that we have from the Fountain Park Phase 6 project. So we had the money because that project bid out very well. So we have approximately a year to get this completed, and we're very excited. I think this was a win-win for the town. In fact, I do not know, having talked to other staff, if we have ever secured a grant through the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority. A lot of other communities, much larger than us, typically get much, get these size awards. So we were competing among the best of the best, and we did very well. So this is really kudos to the staff. They put together a really good grant application, but also to the town, because it demonstrated that we had a lot of need, so.
Councilman Magazine?
Grady, you know how many courts allow us to do?
I believe, I might not be correct on this, but I thought it was approximately six or eight that this is going to allow us to do. It's very costly to do tennis courts.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, we have a lot of pressure to make these pickleball courts, but we're not going to be able to do that. It's going to have to be to the tennis courts.
Good job.
Absolutely. Outstanding. We've got some incredible team over there. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.